We call to order the October 26th meeting of Peters Township Council. The roll call, Mr. Law?
Guys don't know the routine.
Mr. Steigl.
Mr. Currie.
Here.
Mr. Ball.
President.
Mr. Berquist.
Here.
Mr. Cozer.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
For the pleasure of the audience, now.
I would like to raise this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Approval of the minutes, the first item being the transcript of the public hearing held on September 14th.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Next one is the approval of the minutes of the council meeting held on October 12th.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Special reports, Rolling Hills Drive and Rolling Hills Park update.
Yes, Mark wanted an opportunity to bring counsel up to date on what's occurring at Rolling Hills Drive and where we are in terms of that project. I also wanted to talk a little bit about where we are on the first phase of developing Rolling Hills Park and then share with you a copy of the latest rendering for the Aquatics Center.
So this will be an extremely brief update. As always taught, the three aspects of project management are scope, schedule, and budget. So I'll try to hit all three. I'll start with the good news first, schedule. We are on track to have the road open and have the traffic light operational and everything by the end of the year before school opens. So we're on track to hit that. Probably beginning next week, you're going to start to see some traffic delays on East McMurray Road itself. You know, as you'll notice, the off alignment portion is paved up to the binder level at this point. You know, the traffic signal poles or bases were going in this week. Some concrete islands and handicap ramps are going to go in the rest of the week. Then they're going to try to get the wearing course and all the pavement markings put on here, guide rail, basically get the road ready for traffic to be switched over. And then the point at which there'll be delays on East McMurrays is the two tie-ins at each end of the job. You know, that'll take some time to, you know, pave the asphalt in warp with the proper super elevation and everything. So that'll take a few days and that'll be done during the daylight hours. So you'll probably see some traffic tie-ups there and some delays. That was the good news. The bad news, as everybody's aware, this is a unit price contract. There's like 123 bid items on the contract. It's quite a lot of them. To date, everything's tracked, quantities have tracked pretty well with one exception. The earthwork to actually make the embankment to bring this off alignment portion of the road up, at the bottom of that embankment is placed what's called kiway rock in earthwork terms. HRG had tabulated 5,300 cubic yards of kiway rock. Turns out that they missed that number. The installed quantities were actually closer to about 9,600 cubic yards. So it was quite a mess and we've known about this for some time because Liberoni brought this up, you know, when they were looking at what they had stockpiled on site versus what was going in the ground. So I had HRG check their numbers and they did admit that they made a mistake. They made an error in the computation of this. So it's, I think the unit price for this item is like $47 per cubic yard. So if you do the math, you know, it's like $190,000 delta at this point. We are under on excavation quantity somewhat by about $40,000. So I think at the end of the day, between those two quantities, we're about $150,000 over. And we're not done yet. You know, we have the asphalt, the asphalt work to go. Hopefully that will come in at or under quantity. So I just wanted to make counsel aware of that. You know, again, there's really no change order necessary. It's a unit price contract. We have prices for all this stuff. But it did slow the job down considerably because, you know, Liberoni had all the rock that they thought they would need for the job stockpiled on site. And then when the shortage occurred, it just took a while for those trucks to roll in with the new quantity. So it slowed them down considerably. But we're still on schedule, so I guess all's well that ends well.
And the one thing that, you know, Mark and I were talking about this today that you should know is that that unit value that was established, you know, as part of the bid document for this item was actually in the middle of what others had bid for this. So it isn't as though we paid an unfair price for the additional material. It's just that there was additional material.
Yeah, false correct. We had five bidders and there were two above them, two above Liberoni and two under Liberoni in terms of that unit price. So they were right in the middle of everything.
May I just ask, it's not Liberoni's fault necessarily. So are you going to have a conversation with the engineer about maybe splitting it with us?
Um, well.
I'm sorry, why not ask you?
Yeah, I, that's not customary. I mean, it's unfortunate, but the way this is always looked at is if they would have tabbed the correct quantity to begin with, you'd have paid for it anyways. It just, the unit price is what it is and you'd have had to pay for it if it was in the original bid or not. So my idea, I mean, I do want to have a conversation with them. There's some things on an engineering basis that are still left over. For instance, at the end of the job, we still have to file an abandoned, like a state highway abandonment plan for the portion of East McMurray that we're taking back. And that's going to take some effort to do. My thought is maybe that HRG can step up to the plate and maybe give us a freebie on that to try to make up for this mistake, but.
We'll work on them, Mark.
I will.
Thank you.
So that's, I guess the other update is on Thursday this week, we're going to open bids for Phase One of the park, the Loop Road and the Great Lawn and all that stuff. So it's out to bid. We had a pre-bid meeting last week. We have a lot of interest in the job, so I expect some further competitive bids.
You didn't mention the traffic light, or did I miss it?
Well, the only thing I mentioned is it will be up online and functional by the time of school. So if you have any other specific questions about the.
Now, there's not been much evidence of it yet.
Well, you'll see the underground evidence is there. They have all the wiring done. The bases were poured this week for the traffic poles and everything. So slowly but surely that is going in. So I would imagine within the next couple of weeks, you're going to see the poles go up and once we get traffic online, we'll have to get the light. It's usually an authority day, test period for the light.
Right, before they flash.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. So hopefully by Thursday, we'll have a good understanding of what the cost is associated with the first phase of the park. And that's really a key, that's the one key item still outstanding for next year's budget. The other thing I wanted to share with you is we are progressing with regard to the design of the pool. This is the current configuration and I think it captures all the elements that were suggested inside of the master plan. We are going to, or we're attempting to arrange to gather back together the advisory committee to take a look at this and review it. One of the other things I sent out to everyone was a copy of the market study that Ballard King did with regard to the pool. I mean, their methodology is different than what Campos did. They, you know, they used data that was readily available through the census and through ESRI. And, but they came to that same conclusion that they believe that there is, that there is a market for this type of outdoor facility in the area. And as we have discussed before, for it to function and be sustainable, it will require that it service not only Peters Township, but our neighbors as well.
Okay. Audience comments, live audience comments on non-agenda items are still suspended as a result of the COVID. Comments can be emailed to Tom Gromick at the township email address prior to the meeting. Comments will be shared with council. We have one item tonight.
We have one comment. It's from H.J. Manzari who lives at 125 Pine Creek Drive. "I just wanted to express my concern that an outdoor pool would be a waste of money. Better money would be spent on a facility that is indoors, could be rented out to local swim clubs and used all year round. Plenty of summer outdoor pools in the area." And that's the only comment we have this one.
Okay. Unfinished business, there is none. New business? First item is a request for Crossing Condominium Association from Peters Township to maintain a stormwater management pond.
So if you recall, back in August of 2019, council adopted a policy regarding the transfer of privately owned stormwater management facilities to the township. And that policy established seven criteria by which the council would entertain the transfer of a stormwater facility back to the township. What you have in front of you tonight is a request from Dr. Urso in his capacity as the president of the Crossing Condominium Association. And what they've asked is for the township to consider taking over the stormwater responsibility for the maintenance of the stormwater pond that services that housing plan. The fact of the matter is, in that housing plan, there are three stormwater facilities. Two of those are underground tanks. I explained to Dr. Urso that I would have a very difficult time recommending to council that we take over responsibility for many, for underground tanks because quite frankly, when they need to be serviced, I think that that could be a very expensive item to try to do. But there is a stormwater management pond there and what all we are asking tonight is permission from council to have the township engineer meet with representatives from the homeowners association to discuss the possibility and to make an assert, to ascertain whether or not those seven criteria can be met. So moved.
Other discussion on that? Favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next item is resolution authorizing Peters Creek Sanitary Authority to submit a grant application under the local share account program.
Under the local share grant program, which is administered by the Washington County Redevelopment Authority. Authorities can only apply if in fact that their application is sponsored by a municipality. The project that Peters Creek Sanitary Authority is proposing is to do lining of 7,300 feet of sewer that is located in Peters Township. This is part of a larger project in their service area which encompasses, the project encompasses 10,400 feet overall. So I think it's certainly in our interest and it's my recommendation that council adopt a resolution 100620 authorizing them to apply for. So moved.
Second.
Discussion, favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Item C, consideration of salary increase for township manager.
We had a workshop, budget workshop meeting. We spoke with regard to adjustment of the pay grades. We also spoke with regard to a salary increase for my position. What I am suggesting is, and what I believe to be appropriate and fair, is an increase of 2.25%. Quite honestly, that will be less than what any other, well, most other employees in Peters Township have received this year, but it is in line with the amount that I negotiated with regard to the Peters Township Police Department for the upcoming year. And when I negotiated with them, what I told them that I thought that to be a fair increase, given everything that's happening, and quite frankly, I think that same applies to my own situation. So what I'm recommending is that the increase be 2.25%.
So moved. We increase the manager's salary by 2.25% over his current salary of 126,614. Second.
Second.
Discussion, favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Ordinance amending Peters Township Code of Ordinance is Chapter 410, Vehicles and Traffic Restriction Truck, restricting truck traffic on Maple Lane.
So one of the things we got a request concerned with regard to traffic on Maple Lane, both in terms of the nature of the traffic that was there as well as the speeds. And when, and so what Ryan had done was to contact Mr. Madri to do a study on Maple Lane. And what was determined in the area that, of the study, which is from Old Woods Drive down to where it turns into Han Drive, is that it doesn't meet the requirements needed for traffic calming. But at the same time, what was discovered is that on this road over that two-day period, four tractor trailers traveled up Han Drive and Maple Lane, which is not something that I think anybody would think would make a whole lot of sense. And I think what's happening is, I think people's GPS mapping is directing them to this location. It would be ineffective to just simply post Maple Lane because the people are going to come in from Georgetown Road onto Han. I've talked to the manager over at Cecil. He's prepared to place on their November agenda a request to limit truck traffic on Han Drive as well. So what's in front of you tonight is an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinance that prohibits truck traffic on Maple Lane except for local deliveries.
Move, we adopt ordinance 865 amending the Peters Township Code of Ordinance is Chapter 410, Vehicles and Traffic Restricting Truck Traffic on Maple Lane.
Second.
Other discussion?
I have a question. When you say truck traffic, I mean, is it like a weight thing or size thing?
No, it's, it's a nature of the vehicle thing. So if it's a truck, it's not permitted on that road unless it's doing delivery. So you could have a truck of any size that has a local delivery that can use that road. What you can't do is take a truck and use it to get between Route 19 and Georgetown Road.
You mean like a pickup truck?
Not a pickup truck.
Well, I mean, is it clarified in the proposed language? It has to be clarified by size or weight or something.
A panel truck?
It's something in the vehicle. I think Marshall's what.
I mean, this is exactly what you've adopted for Thompsonville Road, which seems to be working.
Okay. As long as it's the same thing. I just want to make sure there was criteria of what type of trucks we're talking about.
It's a bus truck. Yeah, it's a job.
Favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Awarded contract for the construction of accessibility improvements in Peterswood Park.
So Peters Township, the 2020 budget includes an appropriation of $310,000 for the purpose in part of enhancing accessibility to existing park facilities. $150,000 of that expense represents a grant from the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources. If you recall, part of this grant was for purchase and installation of a playground and we have done that at a previous meeting. What remains are these accessibility improvements. There were nine firms that submitted bids for this project. When the project was bid, there were a number of alternate bids that were attached to it. As you can see, in terms of the base bid, what separated the two bidders was a thousand dollars. And when you add in the alternates, what you see is that these bids are still relatively close. So one of the things, and just so that you understand this, that in our bidding process, any bidder within 5% of the low bid is considered to be an equal. And, and though we've had tremendous success with Liberoni in terms of the Rolling Hills Drive project, and if you wanted, you could, you could award the bid to him, we see no reason not to award it to Murren &amp; Murren. The nature of the project is not that complex and I don't think that there's any advantage to the township to not award it to the actual low bidder, so.
Does it make any sense to put a water fountain here? I mean, are they going to, with all this COVID stuff, are we going to ever use water fountains again?
Yes, we are.
You sure?
Absolutely. There's no question in my mind, we will be using water fountains again.
What was the A4 add-on that's not on here?
Uh, I don't know that.
It was a fiber mark.
Oh, it was, yeah.
You know how we contracted those dollars, we have to board the place and all, there was an alternate put in there. If we chose not to contract, what would the, I think there was some.
It was, yeah, it's the surface under the playground. And when we awarded the playground bid, we actually awarded surface at that time, so it's not needed.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we award the contract here in Murren Inc. for $151,288.75 to include the base bid and the additional alternatives, number A1, A2, A3, and A5.
Second.
Any other discussion? Favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Award for Contract of Roof Replacement at Fire Station Number One.
So the 2020 budget, it contains an appropriation of $125,000 for the replacement of the mantra roof on Fire Station One. On October 6th, we opened bids for this. There were three bidders and as you can see, those bids are greatly in excess of the amount of money that was appropriated for this. What we're going to suggest to council is that we reject the bids and that you direct me to go back out and to rebid this project at a later date. We're going to try to do a couple of things to enhance the number of bidders we have.
We reject the bids and direct the manager to rebid the project at a later date.
Second.
Any other discussion? Favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Award for Contract for Fuel under the Sheikah Purchasing Alliance Program.
Well, as in other years, there is only one bid to provide fuel to municipalities in the South Hills. What this represents, this number, .0297, is the increment over an index price for fuel in Pittsburgh. It's going to be my recommendation that we award a contract at last minute of fuels to supply gasoline and diesel fuel.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Approval for recording purposes of the Bayani Consolidation Plan is shown in drawings prepared by Harshman C.E. Group dated September 9th, 2020 for Victor and Susan Bayani.
So this is a real simple subdivision. This owner has two lots. They want to build what would be considered an accessory structure on this lot. You can't do that unless you combine these lots together and that's what they intend to do.
Move, we approve the Bayani Consolidation Plan is shown on drawings prepared by Harshman C.E. Group dated September 9th, 2020 for Victor and Susan Bayani.
Other discussion? Favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Approval for recording purposes, the Nightbridge Subdivision Plan is shown on drawings prepared by Harshman C.E. Group dated September 25th, 2020 for Benjamin Marcus Holmes, Robert and Rebecca Beltsen, Colin and Salamenda, and Emily Wills.
So this involves six lots that are currently configured in this manner. The reason why they're asking to shift lot lines slightly is that on the one home, on the one lot, they want to build a house that would be larger than what the, would be permitted based upon coverage. So they need to take some additional land from one of the adjacent vacant lots to do that. The other thing is you've got a person who has a home with a driveway that comes out to the side. He needs more area to be able to turn his vehicles to get back to the street. So you're not ending up with any more lots. All of the lots are conforming. It's just a matter that you're shifting lot lines slightly across all six of these lots.
I'm going to recuse myself.
Are there any outstanding conditions that haven't been satisfied yet?
Only approval from Peters Creek Sanitary Authority.
All right, I'll make a motion that we approve the proposed lot reconfiguration subject to approval by the sanitary authority.
I'll second. Other discussion? Favor?
Just clarifying question please, Mr. Chairman. Once this is done, will there be new surveys for everybody so they know exactly where everything is? How does that translate so that going forward, people know where their property is?
Well, well, one of the things, you'll have a new plan recorded at the courthouse. I would assume that as these lots sell, that people would be given copies of their survey.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okeydokey, payroll and bills.
Mr. Chairman, accounts payable contains routine payments for capital and operating expenses. The larger project costs include $75,000 for road resurfacing and $225 for the new radio system with the fire station. I also reviewed pay report. I find these to be in order. The credit card statement is included. If anyone from council has questions about that, they can ask Mr. Lawer. Any questions? If not, I move that we approve a constant payable and pay report.
Second.
Discussion, favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Correspondence? Anything to discuss? Okay. Reports? Anybody want to discuss any reports? Seeing none?
Could I ask a question of Mr. Zook? In yours, you talk about correspondence to different people about agricultural security. Is that in preface to the new committee or the new group that you need to talk about?
Yes, we reached out to.
There's three.
Farmers, about tracts and simes.
Are those the only ones who would qualify under that term farmer?
Well, we want to be doing two things. One, we want to redo the agricultural security area. And there will be tracts of land that aren't actively farmed but fit under that category. But the reason why we wanted to start with the active farmers is we wanted to sit down and have a discussion with them to find out outside of the agricultural security area, is there anything that we can be doing as a municipality to support their efforts in town? Yes. So that's where we wanted to start the discussion. I think what we've run into is, I think they're still busy with their farming activity. And so it may take a little bit, a little while to be able to get them all running together.
Well, it's good that that all started moving. Thank you.
Okay. Miscellaneous?
I have one item. I think it's on your desk. This came in late, but to be able to accommodate the request, we'll take action now. We have a request from a Dogwood Charter School and they're working with someone who owns a food truck. And what they would like to be able to do is to have the food truck at St. David's and that 10% of the proceeds would go to support the school. The church is aware of this and approves them being there. My only concern is that, what does that mean going forward in terms of if I'm willing to give a portion of my profits from my food truck, does that mean I can have a food truck anywhere in town? That's my concern.
I think we talked about this a couple of weeks ago, didn't we? About having food trucks, pizza trucks.
There was a pizza truck that wanted to be at that location when the, when the farmer's market.
I don't think council was too disposed toward that.
Yeah, that was a little bit different. I mean, this is a fundraiser.
Yeah, but it's still, it's still a food truck.
Well, it's still a food truck. I mean, I think you could differentiate it, that this is a fundraiser versus, you know, a food truck at the farmer's market every week.
But they're making an open-ended request. They have two dates listed plus future food truck fundraisers yet to be scheduled.
Oh, no, I agree. I mean, I wouldn't agree that it should be open-ended. I mean, if we let them do it once, maybe let them do it once and see how it plays out, but I certainly wouldn't give them car tape lunch to do it as many times as they wanted to because then every organization in this township is going to be in here asking for the same thing.
Well, and is it going to cause a traffic issue on East McMurray? I realize the farmer's market didn't really, but.
My concern is the other is that if I'm willing to give away a percentage of my profits, does that mean I can put my food truck anywhere in town that someone will let me do it? I just don't know. And I struggle with the fact that I think they're trying to do something good here, so.
Is this charter school in Peters Township?
No.
Is it going to be located in Peters Township?
It's going to be part of the Sharp Kears Valley School District.
It takes a little bit of the.
I mean, why would you, why would they want to do it here then?
I'm sure it's a church member that's sponsored.
Oh, I, there's some affiliation with somewhere with the church.
And I guess the other question becomes if you let them do it, then how can we recuse the next nonprofit or the next charter school?
That's what Paul's talking about, sure.
Or even, I mean, if I want to bring in a food truck and do, you know, pick all, there's lots of groups that do wonderful things in town. And if the food truck's always willing to give a percentage of my proceeds to that group, does that mean that, you know, on any location in town, you're going to have a food truck? I doesn't know.
And I'm sure our local food vendors.
That's where I get concerned about.
Yeah, I have a concern too, that we see an increasing number of food trucks at various things. It seems to be the new way of marketing food.
Well, there's certainly a ton of them in Pittsburgh that have emerged in the last decade.
And when they're tied to an event, you know, like we use them in at the, at the.
Amphitheater.
Amphitheater. I understand that, that, you know, like, or if you have a church picnic and you have, I get it tied to an event, but when they're freestanding, how do you, how do you permit that when you have brick and mortar restaurants? I don't, I don't know how you balance that.
Well, we don't treat, you know, outside organizations, you know, when we want to put the sign up on the trail. I mean, we went through that and I don't remember what the outcome of it was, but I thought that was, that was not permitted. I mean, that's, it's like apples and oranges, but I mean, to be consistent, I don't remember what.
Yeah, I mean, we, we had a town enterprises that wanted to use the crossing signs. I think we refused.
We have, we've had an org, we've had a church not in Peters who has members from Peters. We allowed them to put a sign up. But generally, we will not allow people to put signs up on that bridge that don't have a township affiliation. You would not promote something in North Stravane or Cecil Union on that bridge.
I don't think we ought to start the food trucks. No. Sense of counsel is no?
That seems.
Too many strings to it.
So.
Yeah.
I mean, you see that their cause is noble, but I mean, I agree that, and I think we're opening up Pandora's Box. If we let one entity do it, then I don't see how we're going to preclude everybody else from doing it.
It's a, I mean, it's a, it's a commercial venture, really. And it's, you know, would require, should be, require insurance and everything else, which is just stuff that we don't think we want to get into. Okay. All right. Next agenda items? We have a executive session?
Yes.
On legal and personnel issues. Seeing no other business, we're adjourned.